Mary Eastman.
Here. We'll have opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to join us, please stand.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, before we begin our meeting, let us take a moment to thank the Lord for this opportunity to be here, working together towards a common goal of enriching our community and all who live here. Let us pray, Lord. We praise you and ask you to guide us in this meeting, that we may be united in the spirit of mutual respect and in the healthy exchange of our ideas. Help us to work together for the good of all of our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know he times it just right. Are you here, Dan?
I'm here.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, we have one proclamation as an addition.
Okay, all in favor of approving the addition of a proclamation to the agenda?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tweedy and approved of Commissioner Warren and seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve the addition to the agenda. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Now down to approval of the agenda as amended.
Moved we approve the agenda as amended. Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tweedy and seconded by Commissioner Dierkoj to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. We have no visitors and we'll move on to proclamations. Want to come up to the front with me?
My name is Brenda Stewart. I'm with Saint Francis Community Services.
Do you want to say something after we?
Sure do.
Okay. You want to stand up first. Receive this. Arkans City, Kansas, proclamation. Whereas November is National Adoption Month and National Adoption Day is November nineteenth, two thousand sixteen. Whereas there are merely eleven hundred children in Kansas that are waiting to be discovered, loved, and adopted by you. Saint Francis Community Services invites you to become a faithful, loving, caring family. These children need, after the loss of their biological parents. Whereas you can help these young fragile hearts heal and grow as productive members of this community by providing guidance, love, and a nurturing family environment. Now therefore, I, Duane L. Eastman, Mayor of the City of Arkans City, call upon all citizens of Arkans City to observe the month of November as National Adoption Month. And encourage all citizens of the City of Arkans City to observe this month by answering the call to find a permanent and caring family for every child in need and by supporting the families who care for them. I further call upon all the citizens of the City of Arkans City to observe November nineteenth, two thousand sixteen as National Adoption Day. By giving a voice to children who are still waiting for that opportunity, celebrate the bond that unites adopted parents with their sons and daughters and recommit to providing every child with the care and security that will nurture their development and well-being.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that very much. My name is Brenda Stewart and I am with Saint Francis Community Services and I'm an adoption recruiter. And on National Adoption Day this year at Exploration Place in Wichita, for all of our counties around here, Cowley, Sedgwick, Kingman, whatever our Saint Francis office is covering, we will finalize sixty-five children for National Adoption Day. We also have a dove release that day, so sixty-five doves will fly, if it's not foggy, because I guess they don't fly in the fog. And they will join with permanent families for that day. So I'm here also as a recruiter, just to say, we need more adoptive families. And I'm going to leave brochures here with all of you. If you could disperse them to your churches, to your schools, into your community, if you should be would just take a few. I am looking every day for at least a hundred and fifty to two hundred children in our area that need an adoptive family.
Wow. Thank you.
Any questions?
Is there like a pre-screening process?
Definitely. If you've ever bought a house, it's that much paperwork, times two. And I will help you through that process and you'll go through MAP classes, which is ten weeks worth of classes.
What age group are these children? I mean, is it all ages?
All ages, but we are definitely recruiting for children eight years of age and over. Because times, parents get through the process and fail to either some weakness or need of their own and don't get their children returned to them, or they relinquish their rights. The children are older. You know, people are always looking for infants. But older children need, you know.
And who have children right now? Where are they living at?
In foster homes, if we can find placement. Sometimes they're what we call bouncing and that means they're sitting at an office from seven PM, they get to go to an emergency home and get back at seven AM. And so they'll do that every night till we find a permanent, permanent foster home for them, until we then can find a permanent adoptive family for them. And you know, the needs and behaviors of kids has really just grown over the last years because we have a horrible problem in this nation called meth. And so the children are products of that, you know, with a terrible environment. And I just want to say one thing. I speak to you not just as an adoption recruiter, but as a Christian and as an adoptive parent. My husband and I have six children, three homegrown, three by adoption. And they came to us at eight, six, and five, and we were their fourth foster home. So you see children move and move and move. Now all those children are twenty-eight to thirty-eight, which makes me old. And one of our daughters has become, that we adopted, has become a social worker with another agency. So, you know, they can have, they can pull themselves up by their bootstraps and just give them an opportunity. I really thank you for this opportunity and I appreciate all the work you guys do in your community.
Do you know how many placements we have in Ark City?
I was hoping to come with numbers for that, but I do know a couple of the children that are going to be adopted on National Adoption Day, I think, are out of the Ark City area, you know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Leslie, want to do that?
Sure. Here's three items on the consent agenda. Approve the October eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen regular meeting minutes as written. Ratify Mayor Duane Eastman's appointment of Joanne Riley and Josh Hawkins to the Equal Opportunity and Accessibility Advisory Board. And a resolution to approve a deed of transferring contracts with four county mental health centers for property at Strutterfield Airport Industrial Park.
Is there any discussion from the commissioners?
Nick, you might go over that number three, since a couple of commissioners are not on the board.
Basically what that is, is transferring the title of the property. Right now, the four county mental health owns the building itself, but not the property that sits beneath it. So what this does is transfers the actual property to four county mental health center. And it's been a pretty lengthy process. I think we've been working on it about two years now. And so this is just the finalization of that process. It's already been approved by the Strutterfield Commission, just needs our approval, since Winfield and Ark City technically own the property which the facility sits on.
Winfield approved it last night?
I think, I'm pretty sure it did. It was on our agenda.
I would move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it. It's been moved by Commissioner Tweedy and seconded by myself to approve the consent agenda as written. Any other questions? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Full business.
Item one, consider resolution authorizing the purchase of a new detachable goose neck, thirty-five ton lowboy trailer from Holden Industries for an amount not to exceed forty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-six.
This item we brought to you at the prior commission meeting and we asked that we put on hold. Commissioner Tweedy did have a question about it, the warranty period for the trailer. It's one year parts and labor.
I had one other question going over this. There's a, I don't know if I can find it here, something about a cover over the wheels, tires. Is that, that says it's extra. I think, did I read that right?
For the steel wheel covers with traction bars?
Yeah.
Correct. That's, that's already included in there and so are those outriggers. So that ten eighty-three and eleven seventy are included in that forty-one, two seventy-six. If you see the steel wheel covers, go to the previous slide, or see, three slides. Is there a slide before this one? You notice this right there, you see the steel covers on the wheels. What that allows is for more equipment to be placed on that trailer without affecting those tires. If you look at the next slide, you'll see that those tires are actually exposed. And what that does is adds that steel plate on there, so we can use more of it, more of the trailer.
I have a question. How many times a month do we use a trailer like that?
It varies whenever we have to move our loader or dozer.
I would say probably on average, I'd say five times a month, on average.
From the condition of the old trailer, it needs some, it needs some serious work done on it.
It's eighteen years old.
What, you have to load from the front, is that correct?
Right. The goose neck trailer, you load from the front. You can see where it detaches here.
How do you, how do you move that thing off? How do you take the goose neck off?
It's hydraulics that's on the semi tractor.
Okay.
And you lower it down and there's ramps here that hold down, and then you load from the front and you see it's stable compared to loading from the rear. Trying to load it.
Right.
Are those, to get back to those steel wheel covers, are those specially made? I just kind of wondering a thousand dollars if the city could do that. They're made for it already?
Yes. So then, how long does it take to load the current trailer and how much time would we save?
Well, it's not really a time, it's time saved, it's the stability of loading on a trailer that rests on the ground in the front compared to loading from the back, which is, you're really loading onto the tires. You can see on the old one there.
Yeah.
But if the trailer shifts, you could lose excavator, dozer, or whatever you load.
Or two pieces of equipment, the dozer and excavator, they're so heavy that it makes for a high center of gravity when you're loading it from the rear. And so by having the detachable goose neck on the front, you know, low center of gravity, it's easy, it's easier to load because you don't have to go as high to get up on the trailer as well. And so there's some stability issues there. Also, it's not connect, doesn't have to be connected to the truck itself when you're loading it and unloading it, and so that doesn't affect that as well.
So the key is the safety factor with the goose neck trailer.
Yeah, I mean, that's, wells and pipe, they're, they're all like, what you're looking at. I understand that. My question is, I just, I don't know if I want to spend any money right now till after the first year, till we see what this hospital, you know, debt is. I mean, make sure that we're not going to have to dip in our pockets, but that doesn't come, you know, that money wouldn't come from your probably.
What's the cost to lease one per month?
Oh, I, I don't know what it would be. I don't know where we'd lease one, unless we went to Pike or Wells to.
That's the only way you'd have to lease it. In other words, they could, I don't know what they charge, but they'd probably charge at least five hundred dollars to haul around town, you know, to load it up and haul it.
At their convenience, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's available.
How, what was, haven't we made the last payment for the hospital, or do we still have to make those?
Yeah, we still have a balance down in Quam. We haven't got the final bill in Quam yet.
So where, where are we on funds?
We budgeted fifty-seven thousand for it, out of the stormwater, and it's forty-one thousand, two seventy-six, so it's in the budget.
It's in the stormwater budget still. Yeah, it's not in the general fund.
That's not part of the money that we're using for the hospital?
Even if the money that was to be transferred from the stormwater fund that we had in there, this does, this is not included in that transferred money, the potential transferred money.
That money would come from the water?
No, the water sewer and stormwater all potentially will transfer funds into the general fund to cover the hospitals' payments. What else? And sanitation. Yeah. And stormwater is a much lower amount of money. It doesn't generate very much money.
Mike, if we were, if we were to wait till last week of December to purchase this, would they still honor that bid, you think?
No, it's, they gave us ninety days, and ninety days is up November the second, tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
So.
What do you, did, do you anticipate that it would go up if we don't?
We'd be taking a chance. We'd have to go up for bid again.
Okay.
I mean, we could always go back and ask them if they would honor it for another ninety days, sixty days.
How long does it take to get one of these?
I don't know if that's in there, if they've already built it. If they build their own trailers, they're out of Southwest City, Missouri.
I think they keep a lot of these trailers in stock, minus those two add-ons.
These are brand new trailers, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, they build them right there in Southwest City.
I was wondering if like, we pay that for on delivery, right? I was kind of wondering if it'd take them ninety days to.
One month delivery is what they have on the, the former quote. Thirty to forty-five days, they have.
Actually, when it's approved by you is the year that it comes out of the budget.
The year we approve it. Well, okay. Just kind of wondering about, do we have set back the money for the hospital that we're supposed to pay for them? Is that all set back already?
It's pretty much been paid out already, so I mean, it's not.
So we're just looking at the?
Just transfers, just amount of transfers.
Seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars to.
Yeah, but what about the, what about the one that comes in January? Don't we have a payment in January?
We do have a payment in January.
Yeah, but we don't know if we're going to have enough funds to make that payment without coming up next year.
Correct.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm.
It's watching February, isn't that the approach going down?
Yeah, February is when it's, we have to certify funds in Jan, in January, right?
Ten, February.
Oh, ten.
I believe it's, I believe it's March and September.
Yeah.
So we would have the three months of penny and a half, right? Which should.
Correct.
Well, if it, if it's due in February, we've already started on next year's budget, right? So it would, this, this part wouldn't come out of, this would come out of this year's budget. The hospital stuff would come out of next year's budget.
Well, this would, this comes out of stormwater budget. The hospital would still come out of either general fund or head service fund.
So I guess what we're asking is, is if we do approve this, how, how much of a bind will that put us in?
I don't think it'll put us in a bind at all.
Okay.
We're going to generate that more revenue in this other.
Right.
By the end of the year.
Okay.
Mayor, I move we authorize the purchase of a new detachable goose neck, thirty-five ton lowboy trailer from Holden Industries for the amount not to exceed forty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars.
I second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tweedy and seconded by Commissioner Welch that we purchase a detachable goose neck, thirty-five ton lowboy trailer not to exceed forty-one thousand, two seventy-six. Any other questions? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I wasn't against it. I just, I just wanted to wait, you know, a little bit longer till after our first payments, which is why I voted no.
Me too. If we could rent, if we could lease one for five hundred or a thousand for a few times, if it's safety, that could get us through.
Okay, let's move on to new business number one.
Approve personnel policy updates.
Do you have any questions over these? These are relatively simple policies, pretty straightforward.
It's basically what we had last year?
Yes, it's except for, the employee council has changed a little bit. We've added a couple more members and made some changes there.
Can you explain the work changed in it?
Yes, yes. We have added more members to the employee council so that we can have a better representation of some of our larger departments, which would be police and fire EMS. And we actually added the paragraph about the council serving as a focus group for developing and maintaining ongoing programs for employee appreciation and recognition, including but not limited to quarterly breakfasts or luncheons, holiday-related promotions, and the annual employee Christmas party. Then the other thing that changed was just towards the end, where it shows, beginning in February of two thousand seventeen, how we're going to stagger the years so that we can have the constant representation.
Okay.
Karen, you're probably, you're not familiar with this council. What it is, is basically it's, it's our employees that are not supervisory role. And what they do is, once a month, they come before HR Director and myself, and it's kind of a place for us to let them know of upcoming policy changes, insurance changes. And it serves as a communication tool between those employees and myself and, and Marla. So that way they don't have to worry about it being missed by the supervisor, their department head, or whoever it may be. They have that direct contact and interaction. And then those employees are representatives for their department. They go back and, and share what's been discussed. And it's, I, I think it's worked really well. They've had some really good suggestions.
They have, and they're focusing on recognition right now for employees, which of course we really enjoy.
And this cuts down a lot on, on rumors that come out.
Absolutely, yeah.
I believe it does. I truly do. And they bring concerns forth to us as well, so it works both directions.
And if we're thinking something may be a good idea and we bounce it off them, there's been a couple instances, they said, just don't, don't bother, you know? It's not, it's not like it's a, not a bad idea, it's just like it doesn't do any good.
And some things we thought might have been very small, like coaks from Sonic for Valentine's Day with the little Valentine. It seemed small and maybe it wasn't enough, and they thoroughly enjoyed it. They wanted to do it, helped us with it, and we had good results, so.
Okay.
Did they have input on the changes of this policy?
They do. They do. They don't, they don't comment a great deal, but there are certain policies where they are very concerned and they do bring those forward. And that, and so I take note of those for when it's time to go over those policies. So I get that feedback from them.
Do we need a second, is this a second reading or first reading?
It can be done top first.
I move we approve the personnel policy updates.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Yurkowicz and seconded by Commissioner Warren that we approve the policy updates.
Yeah, the only changes been made is what she told us. So everything's like it was last year. I mean, it's.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. You are welcome.
And, okay, I'm lost there. Item number two in the business.
Consider first reading of a charter ordinance, amending provisions of Charter Ordinance seventeen and twenty-two regarding the name, composition, and length of terms of the Convention and Tourism Committee and amending the possible uses of the Convention and Tourism Fund.
Mayor and Commissioners, this item is an outgrowth of some of the transition changes that have been occurring with the Chamber of Commerce and the C V B. Before we get into the language, I just wanted to briefly recap kind of how this all came to be and why we have to do a charter ordinance. The C V B was created in June of nineteen eighty-six by Charter Ordinance Number Nine in accordance with state statutes that allowed the city to establish a transient guest tax on hotel and motel visitors and collect those funds for the purposes of promoting conventions, tourism, and visitation to the city. So the original ordinance established the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is the organization that manages these functions. And it provides for that service to be provided, and as it has been for its entire existence, by the Chamber of Commerce through their personnel. It also created the Convention and Tourism Committee, which is largely appointed by you, the city commissioners, to, I won't say govern because, because of the chamber's involvement. It's more of an advisory sort of oversight role, which has been the source of some of the issues that came up this year. And they established the transient guest tax. That was originally set at four percent, since it's been increased to, I believe, six percent. And it established Tourism Convention Fund, which is where that money actually goes and resides. That, of course, is presented to you annually as the C V B's budget, which at this point is seventy thousand annually. This ordinance was modified three months after its passage by yet another charter ordinance. And to be honest, I don't know exactly what changes were made because we don't have a record that I can access of the strike throughs. We could probably go back and find it, but I don't, I don't know that matters too much. Two years later, it was amended again by another charter ordinance, nine B, simply to expand the representation on the board. Three members were originally hotel, hotel or motel operators, but they wanted to expand that and included anyone that's associated with tourism, basically. So today we have one member who is a hotel operator and two members who work in the tourism industry. One is Chief Ward's wife, who works for travel booking, and the other is Sean Solomon, the director of the Chaplain Nature Center. And finally, nine C, modified this further in nineteen eighty-nine. Originally, the vice mayor was always the representative on this committee. It was altered so that any city commissioner could serve on it. The vice mayor also was always the chair, and that stayed the same until two thousand and five. Actually, sorry, that was in twenty, in Charter Ordinance twenty-two. So twenty years later, they decided that it could be anyone, that could be a chair. Backing up, in two thousand and five, so after twenty years, there had been no changes. This charter ordinance was passed. And Tamara, maybe you can help me with this. I believe this was an attempt to clean up all these four different charter ordinances that were floating around. Basically, it combined all the language into one cohesive document and superseded all the existing language. And somewhere in this point is when the transient guest tax was increased as well, so I don't know if that was part of the reasoning behind it.
I think that was the reason for it, but while we were at it, we went ahead and cleaned everything else up.
It looked like your work, you know, trying to make that all nice. And then four years later, twenty-two was passed, like I said, to change who could be the chair, and now that position is selected by the group. The current chair is already Hicks, one of our, well, he's the chamber representative on the committee. This committee is a little different from our other boards in that a city commissioner serves as an actual voting member, not just a ex officio member. And that is currently Commissioner Tweedy. So what we are proposing today is, would be Charter Ordinance thirty-two, if passed in the current order. This accomplishes several things, and the most significant probably, so that we don't have to go through this process all over again, is that it adds language that would make any future changes to this committee or any of this setup achievable by a simple ordinance as opposed to having to go through this whole process and publish it twice, sixty-one days, all that stuff. So it just doesn't, and I think City Attorney Niles agrees, it doesn't make sense to keep going through this when we've made this many changes already. It's, it's quite, in fact, I think almost a third of our charter ordinances would be due to this one board. So that's one thing that we have set out to achieve. A lot of this language change, and you can look at either the charter ordinance itself or the current municipal code and how it would be altered. They both basically say the same stuff. But a lot of this is just cleanup of, of language and references, grammar, that sort of thing. We did have some outdated references to city departments under the uses of the Convention and Tourism Fund, so we updated that to reflect the public works reorganization. So that's the bulk of it. But we did, in discussions with the C V B committee, decide that to rename the fund to match the current name of the committee. For some reason, they were reversed and the usage is not consistent. It flips around here and there. The board also requests to be renamed the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors, and I, Pam Crane is here, the chamber, sorry, Convention and Tourism Specialist for the C V B, formerly of the chamber. And I'll let her address kind of the reasoning of that, but it has to do with the agreement they've reached with the chamber and how that organization has changed and who she really answers to has changed. But to reflect that, they just wanted a little more formal title. And the chamber representative would transition to just be an at-large citizen due to the fact that the chamber no longer has that direct role. They asked to have their terms extended from two years to three years to help with continuity. Two years really isn't enough time. Your first year as a member, you're just kind of figuring out what's going on. And by the time you've caught up to speed, you maybe come off. Staff has no problem with that. It's a pretty easy transition. You just rotate two members every year. And of course, we went through and cleaned out all the language that we just passed with the general provisions. So everything about quorum and meetings and all that has, has been stripped out of it since that now resides elsewhere in code, which we will continue to do as we modify boards. And as I said before, the language in, it's a very. And as I said before, the language in, um, it's a very section eleven certifies that in the future. We will not need charter ordinances to do this sort of work. Are there any questions before I turn it over to Pam?
So, enter this new ordinance. Who, who will that board answer to? The city commission or?
The board answers to you. Um, you appoint six of the members and the seventh is one of yourselves that you select at the reorganization meeting. So, and that really hasn't changed. What I think Pam can kind of speak to, what created the difficulties for her is that while she sort of answers to the committee that appointed by you, she also worked for the chamber and answered to the chamber director, who has no relationship to you. You have no say over chamber operations. It created, I think, an uncomfortable situation, and that's why they kind of transitioned to what they're doing now. Pam, did you want to speak to that?
Uh, basically, I have, I haven't prepared anything, um, formal. I just didn't know if you had any questions or any remarks that you, uh, would like for me to address.
Well, a question I have is, I'm a little confused in the sense that if you have somebody come in and, and they're bringing tourism in and they ask for some funding and stuff, and you guys approve it, do we have to prove it to you or not?
No, sir. No, they're independent. Well, they're quasi-governmental function, basically, of, of the city.
You appoint the members.
Yeah. We appoint the members and we establish the budget for the year. Um, but it's, the budget's a hundred percent solely based on the money that we receive from the, from the transient guest tax, which is short this year, some, but we knew that it was probably gonna be short, given, um, uh, I think the Atrium Gardens is closing their doors. Uh, they're in bankruptcy right now, so that's had an impact on us. And then also, uh, we, um, rebate a portion of that, well, we rebate the transient guest tax back to Best Western for a few more years.
Right. For example, um, my October payment from the state was twenty-six thousand dollars. Best Western gets seventeen, and we get nine. So.
Revenues are up.
As you can see.
Through the roof. However, Best Western is taking a lion's share.
And what, what we're seeing is people, when they do come to stay, they either stay at the casinos or Best Western. And the con, the condition of the two hotels north of town, I can understand why. Uh, there's been a lot of effort put into work with them, uh, customer service, um, just some different things that we've wanted to, uh, work with them, and there's just not been any, um, cooperation there. And so hopefully, with new management and maybe a new brand, uh, that will change that situation. And the transient guest tax won't be so lopsided to where it's seventeen and nine, so.
Is, is the other motel, motel eight or super eight?
The super eight, they're, and that's something I'm not really sure on. They're owned by the same person, but I don't know that both properties are in bankruptcy.
I think they're, uh, one, one is in bankruptcy and, uh, the vice taken over and they have somebody managing it now. Yeah, Atrium Gardens. But super eight's still up and operational?
I kind of thought they were both owned by the same corporation at one time, so, okay. And do we get any of that money from?
We get a hundred percent of the transient guest, guest tax from that property.
How long does, uh, Best Western still get that amount?
I have never seen that in writing. I've been told it's ten years, but that it pro-rates out, uh, graduates out.
After five years, it, it drops substantially. They have property tax abatement for five years. But in the fifth year, it starts, it ratchets down, I believe, ninety, eighty, seventy, sixty, fifty, and then we get off.
And that'll make a huge, huge impact.
Getting close to five years, isn't it?
And the board seem to think that answering to the city is a better way than the other way?
Yes, sir. Um, what we had before is, we had a board of directors on the chamber side that technically was responsible for the things that the C V B was doing, but they knew nothing about it. They didn't know that they were, um, responsible for it, nor were they, um, even educated on it. Um, so, what was happening is the, the wages and the salaries um, of the C V B director and the C V B and the, uh, chamber director were just being paid fifty percent. C V B paid fifty percent and chamber paid fifty percent. So huge difference in the salaries. Um, I work thirty hours a week at a lot lower salary than the chamber director. And that is something that probably for four years, we'd been looking at. Um, for example, um, in two thousand and fifteen, the salary expense for all of the employees of the chamber slash C V B was a hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. Um, of that, um, now, we are paying thirty-nine thousand dollars, uh, where we were paying half of the hundred and three, which was fifty-one, nine. So, you can see we have about a twelve thousand dollar savings now, which is huge when your budget's only seventy thousand dollars. So, um, just in the salary, we now have twelve thousand dollars more that we can use on advertising and promotion.
What about space? Isn't, isn't it sharing space?
Uh, yes, we are renting the office. Uh, what, what the accountant did is they went through and they broke out all the expenses that we would incur, uh, everything from, uh, accounting services to copier to, uh, utility, the utilities, and break all of that down, divide it by twelve, and it's four hundred and eight dollars a month. So you add the, uh,
So it's just.
That's forty-eight hundred dollars.
Came to, so.
Right. So after, after rent and after the change in, in salary, we have a net savings of eight thousand dollars.
Is that a big, uh, improvement over the rent before that you were paying?
There was, there wasn't rent. There was an administrative fee. Um, it was, it was just very muddy.
Okay.
And there just wasn't a.
So this really separates the C V B.
It does. And the thing that was always concerning to me is one's private money and one's tax money. And the tax money was being spent as private money in the chamber, and there really wasn't any accountability to it. And, um, you just can't have that. So, there is now an accountability. Uh, there, C V B money is C V B money. It's looked at every month. It's, it's audited by our, our treasurer, and it's just, it's just a lot cleaner.
Each year, will they submit, make the budget to us?
Absolutely.
Yes, we still submit the budget to you for approval.
And, uh, having served on the C V B many years before, and then coming in and taking, taking the position again, I, I never thought about what we've done, but it does make a lot of sense. And it, it, it makes us, makes the C V B a more functional unit. And this is, the people that are on that board are really active in, in what they do, and they care about promoting tourism.
But you'll still be working with the chamber, I mean.
Definitely, hand in hand. You, you can't have C V B and chamber and not be able to work, not have them work hand in hand and not lose something. I mean, you have to.
I mean, in, like, I mean, if the chamber asks for something, if they're bringing, doing something to bring tourism in, something like that, and they ask, you know, for some money and stuff, I mean, that would be looked at.
Right. And see, the chamber would just say, this is a tourism piece. You do it.
Okay.
So, uh, anything that is chamber-related, you know, their board takes care of anything that's tourism-related.
Yeah.
We completely take care of it.
Okay.
So, and that's been kind of fun, having Kami new, and then this is kind of a new setup. Everything that walks in the door, we, we weigh it against both, uh, both mission statements and figure out exactly where it fits the best. And it's just been, it's just worked beautifully.
Has the reduction in your budget hindered anything this year?
Has the, no.
Okay.
No. Uh, in fact, we're gonna, we're gonna end the year seventeen thousand dollars short of income. So instead of having our seventy thousand, we're gonna have fifty-seven thousand. And we're gonna be able to get through and hopefully make it through January, uh, 'cause we get our next payment in February.
All right.
And the February payment will be, uh, uh, Arcalala, Carshow, and just stuff like.
Well, Carshow's already in this one, so it'll be, it'll be, it'll be a much bigger.
Holidays.
Motels were full.
Carshow may not have been in this one.
Okay, so that one, 'cause it was at the end of the month.
'Cause it's, it depends on when they report it. They usually, um, close their books at the end of September.
Okay.
Sometimes they pay right away. Some places pay quarterly, so they pay wait till the next quarter.
Yeah, that, that will be a big.
The really unfortunate thing.
You also have, uh, Winfield's, uh, deal too.
Horn Valley.
The Alton Valley thing, 'cause they stay in their motel.
Yeah.
They got flooded out.
Yeah. So they were all full at that time.
The unfortunate thing at the state level on the transient guest tax is it's just kind of the stepchild over here that they don't know what to do with it. And so it just, you know, we, I was just at conference and I asked, who audits this? Who, um, who keeps track if
They're reporting.
Super eight is reporting what, and nobody does. And so, if it's accurate, we don't know. Um, Winfield is very certain that they are not getting an accurate reporting.
Why?
Because they have a member on their, uh, board that is a hotelier, and they know what they pay. And the hotelier just very close that does about the same business pays about a fourth in his, in transient guest tax. So right there, you know that there's a discrepancy somewhere, but there's not anybody to. And that's one of those legislative pieces that we go to Topeka and we try to get changed.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think since, since it's a charter ordinance and since it's changing, you know, from, uh, the chamber to independency and stuff, I'd recommend us, uh, bring it back for our next meeting and give it a little more time for the public to, you know, if there's any questions from the public or whatever. I mean, I, I think it's a great idea, but I, I hate to rush it through, you know, without, maybe there might be some input from the public or someone that may want to look at it.
Waiting two weeks isn't gonna change anything.
Right. And this is something that, uh, was passed by the chamber and also the C V B as far as one hundred percent support to do it.
I think it makes sense. I really do, but I just want the public to be able to.
Sure.
If, you know, if they're in disagreement, you know, at least they'll have come to have a chance to talk about it.
Right.
I don't know what they need to talk about.
Yeah, I don't know what they're gonna disagree with.
I mean, it's, it's actually, it's streamlining the organization more than it was. But I, I agree. That, you know, two weeks isn't gonna hurt anything, so. Do you want to make that a motion?
Thank you, Pam.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. So, so as a motion, then it comes back as a second reading on the next.
Take my pick, which one?
Dan.
Dan, okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Warren and seconded by Commissioner Yokoich that we, uh, table the charter ordinance until the second reading on November fourteenth. Fifteenth, I'm sorry. November fifteenth. Any other discussion? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Got that one right, didn't I? Okay, we're down to city manager updates.
Well, Arcalala went very well. Um, I don't think we have, we didn't, we did not have any major instances besides the water main break right before the night parade. But we were able to get that off in about ten minutes or so. It didn't take very long to get it, uh, it was a blowout of, uh, one of the tie-ins that they just did on the new line. And so they were able to get it repaired the next day right away. Um, they are continuing to work on all the approaches off the avenues onto Summit Street. And so they'll continue doing that, uh, hopefully through, um, well, they will continue for sure, uh, through, uh, Thanksgiving. But they hope to have it all done as far as concrete work goes by, um, Christmas time. Weather, weather depending, of course. And then in the spring, they'll come in and mill and overlay, uh, that project. Uh, also, we received word, um, a few days ago in regards to receiving a grant for an off-system bridge program, uh, through the Kansas Department of Transportation. It was a grant we applied for for the bridge on Crestwood Drive off of Madison. It's the very first bridge on the south, the south side of Crestwood. And, uh, it's an eighty-twenty split, twenty percent local match. Uh, we believe it's gonna be about two hundred and twelve thousand dollar plus design fee of probably anywhere twenty, around twenty-five thousand for design fee. So twenty-five thousand will be on our responsibility. And then twenty percent of that two twelve, so another forty-two thousand. So seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars will get that bridge replaced. Um, it is one of the bridges that is, has been deemed as a D as far as our ratings go in our bridge system, so it's one that's, uh, long overdue for replacement. I believe that one was actually installed in nineteen thirties. And so, uh, we'll be looking at getting that project, uh, in, in twenty eighteen, designed in twenty seventeen, but it won't be.
What about the one on, on Fifteenth Street?
We're looking at twenty, hopefully designed in twenty seventeen, early twenty eighteen, but we're gonna be doing Fifteenth Street next year.
Okay.
As far as, um, reconstruction. You're actually gonna see us start doing dirt work out here, but, uh, out there this fall. We're going to be, uh, moving all the dirt that's at the Presbyterian Manor. And, uh, I believe it's Seventh Day Adventist Church is at the church here on Fifteenth. There's, what now?
Jehovah's, is that?
Jehovah's or?
Jehovah's Witness.
Yeah.
Is it Jehovah's Witness? Okay, Jehovah Witness there on Fifteenth Street on the west, east side of the road. Um, we're gonna be filling in that ditch and raising it up, because if you look right now, there's a culvert that runs underneath there. But if you look at the ditch line, you, you get to where the culvert is, and the culvert actually is about four or five foot below in this limestone, like, encasing, which is kind of weird. So we're gonna fill that in, move the culvert up and fill in those ditches a little bit, but we're also gonna work on, uh, widening the road a little bit. We're gonna, our goal is to, I believe, is to get a twenty-four foot roadway with two foot shoulders on each side, so a twenty-eight foot total width. Right now, that road's only about twenty-two foot wide, so it's a very narrow roadway. So we're gonna be working on the dirt work and we're gonna be, uh, working on the drainage issues to help offset a lot of those costs. And then, uh, we're still working with Andel potentially to do that roller compacted concrete that we discussed. And, uh, um, so we will, um, we have estimates, rough estimates, what it costs for us to just go in there and do a traditional. But the cost savings on time and the material actually would be a little bit cheaper to do it.
Is there any way that we can get the county to fix their road from Creekstone, you know, back over to the Fifteenth Street? That little stretch through there?
I, I've heard some people want to know about that.
Creekstone on Radio Lane?
Skyline.
Skyline Road.
Well, technically, it's still a city street. We haven't completed that annexation transition with Arc City Industries yet, so we're still negotiating with them.
That's when it goes to Fifteenth.
Correct.
But part of that county's gonna, owns it, don't they?
They, they will. That's part of the agreement. They take our responsibility. We've been doing pothole patching.
We've built in the potholes, because I've been down that recently.
And so we still, uh.
Well, last time we was down there for you, it was pretty rough.
Yes, it was.
You know, and, and this, you know, we're taking over a portion of the county roadway too, with, we did Sixty-first. And we also did that portion on Golf Industrial Road, and we have some panels there that are failing as well. So, you know, it's kind of, we ended up, we're gonna put up a lot more money than the county will have to put in.
You said Fifteenth this fall, starting?
We're gonna work on, uh, designs already started, um, on, uh, Fifteenth Street. And, um, we're doing quite a bit of that in-house, so, uh.
So, but this fall before winter time or?
We're gonna start the dirt work as far as getting the dirt work and, and some of the drainage issues this, this fall, winter. And then spring, hopefully have them come in, spring, early summer, come in and work on that. And then the bridge, of course, we're gonna, uh, get in, get in engineering agreement to move forward with the design of the bridge. And then hopefully in early eighteen, we can do the bridge.
We're gonna be looking at that Andel concrete people.
Correct, with that roller compacted concrete. Yeah. But we'll get all those beds and everything to you. And we'll go through it when it gets a little bit closer. But like I said, we're gonna do the dirt work and, and, uh, a lot of that other work.
That won't affect the, the, uh, Fifteenth Street while we're doing that, what, for the residents?
There, there will be some, the, the entrances, you're gonna have to have, where they only use one entrance. 'Cause we'll probably do half of it one time and then half of the next. But the thing is, with the roller compacted concrete, hopefully, it can be a start to finish in a month. And that's a brand-new roadway, which is, you know, when you look at traditional construction, three, four months. So we're, we're hoping to cut it down, you know, twenty-five percent traditionally.
That's the one where they just mix it with the surface.
They, they mix it with the existing con, the existing asphalt, and they mix it with the. They they mix it with the existing con, the existing asphalt, and they mix it with the um the existing base and and the asphalt, and they inject it with concrete, and then they level it, and then they come back in with a two or three inch overlay of concrete on top of that, maybe four inch overlay of concrete.
I remember the video.
And they compact it down.
I think there were two processes he talked about.
Yeah, there's two processes. The first process, um, mix it with concrete, and then the roller compacted concrete is the finishing product. So you have a branded concrete road basically when it's done, it's wider.
I don't think, I don't think there's much base there.
There is no base. It's just asphalt and dirt. It's asphalt and clay is what it is. There's no rock, there's nothing underneath the roadway.
Would that maybe increase?
That's, and that's why we, no, the cost, that's all been figured in as far as our, what we've estimated in the past. Um, the reason why we haven't just milled and overlaid or, you know, just done the traditional patchings is because the road, there is no road base. So we could spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars putting in two inch asphalt or three inch asphalt. But in one year, it's it's gonna give away.
Just like it is now, yeah.
Same potholes will come back.
Exactly, exact same potholes and the same issues you had before, but this should solve it, so it's more like Fifteenth Street, you know, and and same with like Radio Lane and where it's lasts pretty much, you know, twenty, thirty years at least. So, that's our goal.
A Radio Lane project done?
Uh, Radio Lane project is very close to being done.
I know they were striping on Summit yesterday.
They're finishing some striping. Um, I believe they have a few other little
Turn arrows on on Summit, Radio Lane.
Right, I mean, just some miscellaneous.
Last time I, when Eric was here, I asked him about putting uh on Summit, you know, where the houses are at, putting uh parking spots, you know, you said there thought there'd be enough room, they could mark that.
Yeah, we're still looking at the striping plan, yeah.
Get them out of the yards and park it right there.
Yeah, there there is enough width in that roadway. Uh, it would just be a matter of us adding additional stripe, um, a white stripe on the side, and we could do that as well.
Right.
And I I know that he's still looking at the striping plan. Like I said, it won't be till spring, so before they come in and and do, finish all the work. It's definitely something we consider.
I've had some compliments on Radio Lane, how nice it is. It's really nice and
And and we've had a lot of individuals ask why we've, we've done that road and not other roadways. It it comes down to traffic counts is a large portion and the cost. Um, that road was at a point where if you did not do a mill and overlay, because we've been patching it, and we've been crack sealing it, but if we would've let it go for another three or four years, it would've been a total reconstruction. And so by doing the mill and overlay, we've extended that life of that road another ten, fifteen, twenty years. Our plan is, is uh the other product that Andale brought in was that um H A five or I think is what it was called, that oil, and so in in three years, we'll actually go in there and we'll put this oil on top, and that should actually extend the life of the road even longer. So, um, you know, we're gonna start doing a a more comprehensive process, but if I remember right, the traffic that we have on there is anywhere from five to seven thousand vehicles a day. When you look at some some of these other side streets, you know, you're lucky if you have five hundred vehicles a day, so.
Well, with the high school, Ark City Clinic, Presbyterian Manor, and all three, and then Demestry. Couple churches, maybe those would be more Sundays.
And also, the next big, big project that we're gonna start designing on next year hopefully is going to be Summit Street from Ra- um, Radio Lane to Kansas Avenue. And uh hopefully get that um under construction in twenty eighteen too. So we're gonna have a lot of construction projects going on and a lot of work. But at the end of two thousand and eighteen, we're gonna be pretty much tapped out uh when it comes to road funds for major projects. Uh, because the sales tax has been able to carry us through for the last several years. Um, but um we'll have to find other means of 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 doing these projects, but um the Summit Street, if you look just north of the Kansas Avenue intersection on Summit, we have over sixteen thousand vehicles a day that that are in that intersection, which is an unbelievable amount of traffic.
Share the statistics at Winfield at at the corner of Ninth and and One Sixty.
It's about eleven thousand five hundred vehicles at Main and Ninth there.
Not Main and Ninth, yeah.
Um, but compared, we're at sixteen, over sixteen thousand in our intersection, sixteen to almost seventeen.
That's amazing.
And that's two, you know, that's two major highways in there in Winfield, so.
That's true, so.
Um, the Thursday night all-class reunion at the at the park, did it go over okay? Any problems?
It went, it went well, yeah. Um, I don't think we had any problems in regards, the next morning it was almost spotless. And they did a great job cleaning up themselves. We did very little work.
I didn't see, well, I was there, and I didn't see any
You know, I think we've had a few comments in regards to the beverages, um, as far as providing more selection for for that are non-alcoholic.
Yeah, I I think the committee's probably, because a lot of people talked to them about that, I think they're a lot more.
And so uh we have our um wrap-up meeting next Monday, I believe, is when our wrap-up meeting is with Arkalala. So we'll bring up some suggestions. One of the things I um would like to do and and I think about every year, but I just don't get it written on papers, um, the downtown stereo speaker system, we've gotta get it where we get it out of the chamber probably, or we get it where we have more control over it, because what I'd love to do is actually have us get a microphone plug-in at where they put the stage, and so they can announce over the entire width of of Main Street. And then also, if we ever have um have another tie-in, potentially some at uh another area, so if we ever have car shows or whatever, and they wanna do live radio broadcasts, we have plug-in there that they can broadcast it over there, so. Well, we're, we're gonna try to figure out some way to do live broadcast, so that way uh everyone can hear it. And then also, we gotta work on our selection of music and and all that, because it's
I'll help you out.
Yeah.
The old lollies.
Yeah, absolutely, but I, I think that's something we're gonna work on here in the next year. We did look at it one time, Sirius Radio uh has a commercial business package, and it, I can't remember what the cost was, but it was like a hundred and some bucks a month just for that.
Cousin Bruce, Cousin Bruce is on.
Uh, I was gonna ask you something, oh, I know, uh
I know.
During Arkalala, you know, that stage there, you can't hear it anywhere. Is that what you're talking about?
Right, yeah, have it where it plugs into the sound system, because we have speakers all the way down Summit Street, and we can turn the volume up to a point where everyone can hear it even over the loud noise. So I think that's what we need to do.
Yeah.
And then like car crews, it would be great if the local cars, uh, radio station, you know, and all the vehicles are going up and down, and all were playing the exact same music. It'd be pretty cool.
Have to look into that.
Yeah.
Yep. Who's who's in charge of that?
Pam.
Pam.
Pam and I'll work on it.
Oh, okay.
Matt Betts, I'm sure will be involved, so.
Are you, have any more updates for us?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Move adjourned.
Is there any other business?
Mike mentioned on the uh Preston Drive Bridge, there was seventy-two applications submitted to the state to thirty-two point two million dollars, and they only awarded seventeen of the applications. They only had eighteen, so we lucked out pretty good.
Yeah.
That was good.
Oh, uh, I just thought something else there. Uh, Mansum, on the grant that we applied for for the wastewater line from the plant? Are we too late for that this year? Do we have to do it next year?
We are too late for this year.
Can we do that for next year?
Yes.
Uh, what about the water plant? Are we behind, I mean, or?
We, they're a little bit behind, but they're catching up slowly, you know, as the weather continues to hold out and
What, thirty days behind or?
No, they're not thirty days behind. I'd I'd say they're probably two weeks behind, but they gained three or four days last month, so I mean, they're catching up. It's just, it's weather dependent.
When uh, once they get that bill enough, then they, you know, it'll go a lot faster.
Correct.
So what, my my question is, is uh how long will it take to get the bill enough? I mean, what, will we look at another thirty, forty days?
No, they'll probably see walls going up. I think what Eric told me today is anywhere from six to eight weeks. You'll see the walls go up. Um, they're still working on all the uh pipe trenches, and they're still working on that one well, um, uh, which is like a mixing basin type well. They're still working on that. Um, they're working also on the storage containment for the uh chemical storage containment. And so the west end of the building, there's like these big, deep trenches, which will have uh like poly tanks go in, so if there's ever spill, it's self-contained and can leak out.
And then we'll, we'll have to bore the road right there to take that to our wastewater plant?
Yeah, we'll bore the road, and he's working on that right now.
I seen our equipment over on the other side clearing out all those trees.
Yeah, we're, we're working on clearing all those trees out, which is really cool. As soon as we get the last little bit, when you're driving down Summit Street and you look back, you should, you should be able to see the water plant once it's, once it's completed. It's gonna look really cool.
It looks nice now.
But we're also gonna have that hike bike trail, and one of the plans we're looking at is with this waste line, we're gonna open trench at all instead of bore directional boring. And so the cost difference between directional boring is what we budgeted for as directional boring, and the difference between um opening trench, what we're talking about doing is once we bury it, and then we're gonna put a ten-foot sidewalk right on top of it. So that'll be our hike bike trail, and it should be about the same cost.
Oh, wow. That's, that's awesome.
So then they'll extend that trail all the way to Summit Street, and then Summit Street project, then we're gonna, with our grant that we received for the Klink project, all the uh ADA ramps are all eligible for their eighty-twenty match. So we're gonna have all the ADA ramps done as well along Summit Street for, in that portion. Um, and we're also gonna do pedestrian crosswalk, um, so they can get to the Hapner Sports Complex, and then we're gonna do a pedestrian, a lighted pedestrian crosswalk is our goal across Summit Street to get from either the west side or the east side. We're still trying to work on which side of the roadway we're gonna have that sidewalk.
That's gonna be awesome.
It's gonna be really nice, but our goal is to get that entire loop done, and and we should be able to do it between these two projects and and hopefully with some funding.
Uh, one other question, we had the, with the state, you know, about the boating and stuff, we're looking at this area.
West Chestnut?
Yeah.
Yeah, met with him today, and we're getting some cost estimates, and he's ready to go uh get some funds.
Might, that could be huge for wa- or water.
Yeah, he's excited, and like I said, we're just, I have to get with Eric, and we gotta finalize some cost on that, just to make sure that his estimates match what our estimates are, and then um he's gonna go out and fundraise and raise all the funds for it.
But I've, a lot of, there's been a lot of people, uh, you know, excited about that, and they've heard rumors about it.
Well, what's good too is it's gonna provide a parking lot for a lot of those individuals that use the hike bike trail that's closer to the trail, rather than having to park along roadway, because we've had some complaints about parking along Chestnut. And I do feel really sorry for them, because, you know, they should be parking by the pool, but convenience-wise, it's not very convenient, because you have to drive all the way around. It's so much more convenient just to park right on the roadway, so hopefully that will address their concerns.
One other question, how about the wellhouse on that new uh well we got drilled?
Should be going out to bid. I think he's trying to have the plans out this week for bids, so.
Did everybody hear how many, many gallons we were getting out of there? Like, it's huge, a thousand gallons a minute now.
Thousand gallons a minute. It's designed for six hundred, but it's, we're getting over a thousand gallons a minute out of that well.
The other question is, if we, with that rating, like it was four, I mean
We're working on our water rights. That was another thing that we talked about previously with our water rights, um, getting, um,
Yeah.
I think we're gonna get um almost fifty percent, twenty-five to fifty percent increase in our water rights.
Great, because of that one well?
Because if we could, we can continue improving it, the recharge rate is so quick on those wells that it's just, it's, it's unbelievable how quickly they recharge.
Yeah, those wells are, what, seventy years old? Some of them are.
Uh, yeah, seventy, almost eighty on some of them.
Do we have another one that's not pumping? I mean, that's
No, all of them are, are working. They're not all working to capacity. That was the one that failed, it's the one.
They're all working?
Okay, I couldn't remember.
Yeah, some of them just aren't drawing. I mean, we just don't draw as much, because the casings either clogged or it's, it's starting to fail a little bit.
All right.
Got a lot going on.
Yes.
We're busy.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved?
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
He already said a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll read that. It's been moved by Commissioner Tweedy and seconded by Commissioner Yukovich. To adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Chief, you look like you were having a great time when we approved.
He's still dragging.